The Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified. And we are in the boardroom again for the first time in a year, in 363 days. So we're happy to be back in here. Are there any requests for to speak on any subject?
No, not for closed session items.
Great. Given that, I will recess to closed session. And we'll be back at 6:30. Thank you.
Yes, we have been live.
We have been?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll start the meeting. We'll be a little bit slow here. Please excuse us. I'll call to order the open session of our regular meeting of the Board of Education here on Wednesday, March 10. And we are all in the boardroom. And so we're being a little slow because we're still trying to get accustomed to our new digs here. It's been 362 days since we were in this room meeting. So we're happy to be back and hope you can all hear me. Because we are all socially distanced. The doors are open. The temperature is cool. And we all have our masks and some degree of vaccinations, I hope. So our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm glad to see we have Shane here with us to help us with that. So Shane, we'd be glad to hear you help us with that pledge. Thanks very much.
It's great to see you all. So yeah, let's get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, just as.
Justice for all.
Thank you, Shane. The board took no action during closed session. And now we're down to approval of the agenda. I believe it's amended with a personnel report. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Superintendent, there you go.
Can you hear me? So yes, personnel. And also, we are pulling item 15G. Notice of completion for Vanoye because we just have to do one more piece before we bring it back.
Okay.
To have it come to the board.
Okay, is there a motion on this? Lavender? Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dot, for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Shane for his preferential vote.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Whitaker? Trustee Cuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Theodore?
Yes.
And my yes makes it five to zero. So we'll move on to the mission statement. Trustee Whitaker, thank you. Thank you. So I'll go over the ground rules for public comment. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise their hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button. And to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine. To request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn, allowed to make public comments. And after your allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. So we're down to the student member report. Shane, thank you.
We have a few cool things going on in our community. CVHS is still continuing with our 10-week Sauce Pop Student Club activities. CVHS is currently conducting its elections for next school year. Canyon is hosting community conversations on the 18th and 25th of March to build community connections. High school leadership is gearing up to help with the transition into in-school and in-class learning. Independent plans on holding their annual week readathon starting March 22. CVHS leadership has been working with Mr. Baker for instructional videos for high school reopening. And all schools are gearing up their students and staff for reopening, especially being that we've transitioned into the red tier this week.
Great. Thank you very much. Onto item five, which is our school report. And our special guest tonight is Castro Valley Elementary. So we welcome them. Superintendent, do you want to introduce them?
Yep, we're excited to have them. And Ms. Afi Sklute, I see is right on there to get us started. Nice seeing you.
Good seeing you guys. It's nice to have you back in the boardroom. All right, so good evening, board members, community members, and cabinet members. My name is Afi Sklute, and I am the principal of Castro Valley Elementary School. Tonight, we will be presenting about equity in education. However, before we begin, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of the presenters that three of four of us are white women. Although tonight we are speaking, we know that if we are to successfully do this work, we will also need to be listeners, allies, and advocates so that we may continue to take action as abolitionist educators. And Amy's getting our slides ready to go. Next slide, please. Before my amazing teachers tell you about the work we've done this year, I want to give a little background of what's gotten us to this place. In 2018-19, we started the year with a book study using Anthony Muhammad's The Will to Lead, The Skill to Teach. This book was inspired by discrepancies we found in our academic and behavioral Swiss data. We realized that in order to make change, teachers needed to know why this work was important. In 2019-20, we formed a CVE Equity Task Force in order to build leadership capacity and ground our equity work. Our work focused specifically on Hispanic Latino students to address discrepancies highlighted by our data. During this time, we maintained an intentional focus on our data and changed our practices, which resulted in the closing of gaps in both academic and behavioral data. Summer of 2020 was a pivotal time for a lot of us. Staff was hurting over the death of George Floyd, and we gathered as a group. That's what we do at CVE. We've been together, a lot of us, for a lot of years. And we tend to get together to process things that happen. As groups, we attended webinars on abolitionist teaching, equity, and anti-bias, anti-racism, also called Abar practices. These weren't school assignments. I wasn't telling people they needed to go. We attended because we wanted to. Excuse me. And as a team, we agreed that dismantling systemic inequities and white supremacy in schools was an urgent need and would be our focus moving forward. Our 2021 school year started with the Equity Task Force realizing that if we're going to break up the systems of oppression, we need to look beyond the scope of just our CVE staff. We needed to inform, empower, and enlighten our children. This coincided perfectly with the development of the district's SEL Abar curriculum. And using feedback data from staff, we landed on the goal of building capacity and supporting staff in doing this work with our kids. Ms. GW will tell you about how this work has evolved over the course of this year. Next slide, please.
Hi, thank you, Mrs. Sklute. Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Gasmer-Wilwage, also known as Ms. GW. I teach TK at CVE. In the abolitionist teaching network webinars we attended throughout the summer, we discussed the need for looking at our curriculum with an abolitionist lens. As stated by the lovely Dina Simmons, "Any curriculum that isn't implemented with an abolitionist, anti-racist lens can be used as a weapon. Good intentions do not equal good outcomes." This quote really speaks on the intention of our work at CVE this year. These words and discussions helped us evaluate the support and needs of our staff. Our goal was to support our staff in this Abar work, even if they didn't feel ready. Next slide, please. We gave our staff a survey in August to discover where they were at with this Abar work. Questions focused on evaluation of both their self in this work and where they were at with their students. After the survey, we wanted to narrow in on two specific questions to help support them with their students. The first question, how comfortable are you having conversations about racism and a history of white supremacy with your students? In the pie chart to the right, think of the colors like a stoplight, where red is not feeling very comfortable at all, yellow somewhat comfortable, and green very comfortable. This is our pre-data. And we saw our staff leaning more in the middle and some members leaning towards the side of not being very comfortable at all. Next slide, please. We also narrowed in on the second question. How confident are you in your ability to integrate anti-racism into your curriculum? We saw again, staff about in the middle for their confidence in bringing anti-racist curriculum to their students. We use these questions and data to design the focus of our Equity Task Force meetings with our staff. Mrs. Iovino will lead us into that flow. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Iovino. This year, I teach a third and fourth grade combo class at CVE. Earlier, Ms. GW was talking about our data. And it was clear to us that we need to prioritize having these conversations in our classrooms. So acknowledging this need, we designated time in our staff meetings for equity work and our Abar curriculum. We'd start each meeting reviewing goals and norms and to highlight the work that was already being done in classes. Our staff shared out SEL celebrations, which might include roses, amazing things happening, but also thorns and buds, challenges or things we're building upon. The bulk of our work happens in small group breakouts. We then touch base to see the work being done across grade levels. And our time would end with action items, and we'd always offer resources to our staff. Next slide, please. Initially, we spent the majority of the breakout time on the ADL Resource Bank. Fortunately, multiple members of our Equity Task Force has volunteered on the district-created playlist team for the Abar curriculum. That meant most of us had already explored different videos, books, and created slides for this bank. And within our TK 2 and 3rd through 5th grade breakouts, we'd go over this bank to discuss best practices for teaching topics such as identity, prejudice, or discrimination. As teachers began using the Resource Bank, we also adopted the Mosaic project format of examining scenarios. Our team would meet to look ahead at our ADL units, choose challenging topics, and Abar scenarios to bring to our staff. For example, a student is being called a bully by others and has no one to play with at recess. What do you do? We chose issues we face in our own classrooms. And having a site-wide discussion helped us build common language to address the issue and future conversations with our students. This time in breakout rooms was a balance of theory and practice. Not only did we discuss the whys of the work's importance, but how it would look in our class. The goal was to brainstorm integrating the Abar curriculum into our classrooms and embed it into our academic content. Most recently, our staff collectively worked on ways to integrate anti-bias, anti-racist work into our Black History Month celebrations, which Ms. Robbins will share about next. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Robbins, and I teach kindergarten at three schools this year in Castro Valley through the CVVPE program. So our team knew that we wanted to approach Black History Month in a way that was different than ever before this year. So guided by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, we landed on the theme Black Identity, Representation, and Diversity. This theme aligned with a message from someone our team has been learning from, Dr. Goldie Muhammad, author of Cultivating Genius. She says, "We must start their stories and their identities with their excellence." Next slide, please. So we agreed that the way we wanted to approach it would be to celebrate black success, create space for historically marginalized individuals, and showcase black joy and black love through literature. Next slide, please. So what ended up happening was that we created a document, and every teacher on our staff inputted a historically marginalized black innovator in different learning fields into this document. They also contributed student-friendly resources so that we could get going with projects for our kids right away. We also spent time in staff meetings, having grade-level discussions on how to implement these resources into our classrooms, which really speaks to the collaborative nature of our school. Our students studied innovators like author Faith Ringgold, entomologist Charles Henry Turner, human rights activist Marsha P. Johnson, and many more. We received positive feedback from the teachers and the students on learning about these historical figures. And our hope is to continue it as a tradition at CVE for years to come. With all of this dedication and implementation of the work you've heard about tonight, both in staff meetings and in our classrooms, came some really encouraging post-data, which Ms. GW will take us through. Next slide, please.
After supporting our staff in these multiple areas for this Abar work, we sent a second survey with the same questions in February. As you can see, from August to February, in our first question on conversations about racism and a history of white supremacy, there's definitely a shift away from the red, from not feeling very comfortable at all, where the majority of our staff are now finding themselves in either yellow or green. And again, yellow being somewhat comfortable, green being very comfortable. Next slide, please. Here's our second question on confidence and integration of anti-racism into our classrooms. Again, we're seeing a shift in how they are currently feeling in this work and what they're able to bring and explore with their students with more confidence. We see in this data a definite increase. And even though there's a movement with this, we know, of course, we are not done with this work. And there is no being done with this work, rather to continue evolve, to evolve. We look forward to continuing to grow with our staff. Our hopes are to revisit more self-work with our staff while continuing to grow in how to support our students TK through 5th grade. Next slide, please. We also wanted to share with you what our TK through 5th grade CVE students are saying about this Abar work. Next slide, please.
I thought that people get segregated because of their color of their skin. And I think that's not fair. Because just because of their color of their skin, they don't get the same rights.
But based on the color of many people's skin, they weren't treated fairly. Because since white people had more rights, they were being treated way more fairly.
So I've learned quite a lot about prejudice and discrimination. One learning that prejudice is like when you judge somebody just because of their race, gender, or just like what they believe in or how they look.
Discrimination is not good. And we need to stand up for our friends.
Because prejudice, discrimination, and racism is happening in the world. And we need to know what is happening in the world for us to stop.
If you don't know racism, then you're not gonna know to speak up to the front. And if you don't know that, then racism is just gonna keep continuing.
It's important to learn about these things because it's so normalized in society now. And racism is getting a lot bigger and it's growing a lot faster. And us kids, we can stop that if we just learn all about this stuff. And then we should make the world a better place.
Kids can end racism by shouting out and holding up a sign. That's not nice.
Kids can help end racism by fighting for it with signs and posters.
Kids can help racism by not excluding people of different colors and have kindness towards any color of skin.
Celebrate all our differences and grow up to be anti-racists. That's what I'm doing, and I want to keep doing it.
So we'd like to conclude with a quote from one of our most inspiring leaders in this work, the founder of the Abolitionist Teaching Network, Dr. Bettina Love. She says that "To love all children, we must struggle together to create the schools we are taught to believe are impossible. Schools built on justice, love, joy, and anti-racism." Thank you.
So needless to say, I'm incredibly proud of the equity work that CVE has done and will continue to do. But I would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that the board, cabinet, and Superintendent Amati have been pivotal in empowering us to do this work. You have inspired, motivated, and made us feel safe as we continue on this journey. And we are incredibly grateful for that. And now, Mrs. Iovino will be honoring our CVE Bear of the Year. Next slide, please.
All of us at Castro Valley Elementary are so honored to be awarding Jenny Wang with this year's Bear of the Year Award. And I was also very lucky to have Jenny in my own 3rd grade class two years ago. Jenny is a responsible, independent, creative, and hard-working student. This year has definitely introduced some new challenges to the students. However, Jenny adapted well from the start of the school year and has continued to show great perseverance and determination. She maintains high expectations for herself, always thriving to do her absolute best. Furthermore, she is always listening attentively in class and consistently makes an effort to apply strategy she's learned from her teachers when completing assignments. Jenny's strong work ethic and love of learning has allowed her to continue to grow and flourish academically each year. Her bright smile and caring personality are some of the things that teachers have also admired most about Jenny. Moreover, she's a great example of a CVE bear who always follows the bear code on a daily basis. She has always been a role model for other students by being well-behaved and overall very respectful. We are so proud of you, Jenny, and we are confident that you're going to continue to be amazing and do many great things as you move up to middle school next year. Next slide.
And finally, our Volunteer of the Year, the woman I had to text 500 times to get me a picture, who is absolutely beautiful and a very important part of our CVE family, Ms. Myla Long. She's wholeheartedly committed to supporting and giving back to our students, teachers, and families. Her work has helped to build a greater homeschool connection while also building relationships within the Castro Valley community. Over the years, Myla has been a regular volunteer in the classroom and an active member of PATA. And she is currently in her second year as president. During this time, she has helped plan events such as our fall festivals, movie nights, and walkathons, and has also worked hard as our yearbook coordinator. This year, Myla has been instrumental in building community and providing support during this unprecedented time in distance learning. She has made an extra effort to include all CVVPE students in our special events and worked hard to ensure that they get their pictures in the yearbook. Myla is a strong advocate for our school and puts in a lot of effort toward raising money for field trips, classroom supplies, and Teacher Appreciation Week. Myla's heart and passion for our school community is felt by all, and we are truly lucky to have her as part of our CVE family. Thank you so much, Myla. And that concludes CVE's presentation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. It's a terrific report. Really happy to have you here with us this evening. Are there board members who'd like to make comments here? Lavender, I see your hand first.
I'm gonna try to make this work. I was told that you couldn't hear me before. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. I just want to make sure I'm dialed in on the computer. I know it's a little difficult, the first time with technology. You know, CVE has always been a great community. I just want to say how warm-hearted and honored and proud I am of this community for taking on the work, the equity work that you've taken on. It shows great leadership in our community. And I want you to know you're supported. And I want you to know that I think that the things you're doing are what we need. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And I can't help but say how cute the kid were in that video. Amazing. And a big thank you to Jenny Wang. And congratulations for being Bear of the Year. That's great. And Myla Long, thank you so much for building community and everyone's time of need. We all need more of that. Thank you, and thank you all for your presentation.
My glasses keep fogging up. I can't find anything on my computer. First, I want to thank you as the only person of color on this board. I want to thank you for recognizing that people of color are also in the minority in your presentation tonight. That's important. But I also want to acknowledge how impressed I am. And Afi, I know how deeply your commitment to social justice and racial justice goes. So thank you very much for this presentation tonight. And Myla Long, I was PATA president for two years, and then here I am on the board. So if you're looking for a career path in public education, this could be it. Thank you so much for presenting to us tonight.
Oh, yes, I'd just like to really thank CVE for their wonderful presentation. Your work on equity is really wonderful and very important for our town. And I wanted to congratulate Jenny Wong for, you know, winning the award for your school as well as Myla Long. And I wrote down one little quote from one of the children in the video, was "Discrimination is not good. We need to stand up for our friends." I liked that. I thought that was a very good statement.
Mike?
I want to congratulate Jenny and Myla Go Bears. Thank you for your contributions. And Afi, what a fantastic school community. It's where my kids started public school, and it was always very special. And there's something about the spirit of CVE that I think we all can learn from. Having grown up in the community myself, where people are hesitant to confront issues like racism, I think this is important, what you're doing. And I want to thank you for doing it at such a young age. This is important. Thank you.
Shane?
Well, I just echo what everyone else on the board has said in commending you for putting together these lessons. And just things in specific, I know exposing kids to the injustices that exist in Black and Brown communities is incredibly important. But I know for many young Black and Brown students, they could build that trauma from only being seen as injustices. So I think that during your Black History Month presentations, you making it important to showcase black joy is extremely important. And I think that's like an amazing part of your work that you're doing. Also, it just gives me so much hope about your work because you're not only making students aware of these problems, but based on the student responses that you showed us, they're learning about ways to combat it. Some of them said holding up signs or including people in the workplace. So I think all the work that you're doing is amazing, and I thank you on that.
Great. Parveen? Parveen, can't hear you.
I was gonna say, can we, first of all, can we keep Shane back so he doesn't leave? Because he's just amazing. The way he just described that is just beautiful. So I always think about walking the talk. Afi and CVE, they walk the talk. And I think one of the quotes that you used was, "Good intention does not equal good outcome." And that's only it would do that if you walk the talk. And that's what I've seen in CVE. It's just incredible. We are so fortunate to have you. I can't even tell you how proud I am of all of the work that you guys are doing. It's about relationship. It's about honesty. It's about working together and collaborating. And really, the will to lead that all of you have displayed. And then another thing that really impresses me is how you guys always use data to drive whatever decisions you make. And looking at the pre and post-data just makes me so proud of your work. It's so important to do that. It's all about outcome, and we can see that outcome. So bravo to all your work. Ms. GW, Ms. Iovino, Ms. Robbins, and Afi Sklute, just thank you so much for presenting tonight. And I did love what Ms. Adams talked about. I just loved hearing, you have to stand up. And that's a message to all of us. So Jenny, congratulations for being humble, kind-hearted. You can't have it any better than that. So congratulations. And Myla has been wonderful. I've gotten to know her through PLC, visiting with you. And we're just really grateful to have you. So thank you, thank you for this beautiful presentation. I wish you were here so we could all hug. Virtual hugs to all of you.
Thank you, Parveen. And thanks to all of you at CVE. First of all, congratulations to Myla and Jenny. That was all the great work that you've done there, and that's wonderful. And thanks to all the people at CVE who are working so hard to actually translate our motto, "All Means All," into reality. And so I think... And so I think this is really good. You're the first group that's really focused your presentation on social justice. And it's quite exciting and refreshing to see a school focus on that as hard as you guys are. And I do want to put in one more plug here. It's a little bit beyond your school, but I want to put in a plug for our Community Alliance, which is another way to translate these ideas into reality. And if you're interested in that, it's on our district website in connection to that. And they are actually also taking a lot of action around the community in various ways. So once again, Afi, thanks to you and all your staff and your parents and students for a great presentation and for wonderful work down there. It's a great school, so we really appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. And we all got our shots today, second.
Great. Congratulations. Terrific.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item six, which are the reports from our two bargaining units. I think I saw Robin on the list. Robin, welcome to our meeting, Robin. I think you're almost in.
Yes, I am here.
Glad you're here, Robin.
And I, good. I don't know if we'll get picture or not at this point. But CSEA to the board, welcome back. We have hit the red tier of all the, so many of the things we have thought about, planned about, talked about, worked out, discarded, put back in, made other news, and all the different pieces that have gone into this. We are finally about to see the response and the actual fruit of our labors toward reopening. It's an exciting time. And yes, we are finding the little tiny glitches we may have missed. But you know what? It is a huge undertaking with a huge number of pieces to all come together. And we're so very happy that we have made it this far. We look forward to the new challenges and the new excitement of returning back to class. We wish everyone well. Want them to be sure to follow all their, the protocols because it's not just for you, it's for you and for everyone else. So as your CSEA Chapter 52 president, it is my pleasure to say, hang on, we're going for the ride. Thank you, President Howard, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Robin. Move on now to the Castro Valley Teachers Association, and I believe Mark is here with us. Hello, Mark. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, guys. This is the, this is the second meeting in a row where Robin and I have basically the exact same communication to everybody. So that's good. It's evidence that we're all working together, which is great. But, you know, our elementary teachers are getting ready to return to in-person instruction. In exactly one week, the PKK students will have had their first day of in-person school, which is very exciting. Making this happen took an incredible amount of time and effort and collaboration and sleepless nights. I know we've all had those the past year. The goal of CVTA leadership was and still is to establish and maintain a safe environment for our students, staff, and community. A supermajority of our members have received their vaccinations, which is an incredible comfort. It is still of the utmost importance, as Robin said, that everybody still follow the safety protocols. We are relying on each member of our community like never before to be on the same page when it comes to following these very, you know, important safety protocols here. Just from a completely new model of instruction that was created on the fly about a year ago, it's another brand-new model is going to definitely be challenging for our staff and our students and our families. We know that there will be kinks and things that we did not anticipate. So we, you know, are also relying on everyone to be patient and to give everyone some grace as we transition to this hybrid model. And finally, we have not wrapped up our secondary MOU yet. But even so, I would like to thank everyone on both bargaining teams for working so hard to make opening our schools possible. It has been a Herculean task, and our hard work will be evident in the next several weeks as we roll out our return to in-person instruction. So thank you, board, and I hope everybody has a very nice night, and I wish everybody peace and comfort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Glad to hear from you. I don't see any hands raised for public comment on items not on the agenda. Is that correct, Amy?
That is correct. I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, so the board now would like to take a five-minute recess. So on my clock, it is 7:06. We'll be back at 7:11. Thank you. Am I still muted? Okay, good. We're still struggling here for everybody's trying to figure out how to do this back in the boardroom.
I can talk, but I can't get my camera on.
Oh, well, we know you're, I can see you at the other end of the room.
Okay.
We'll move on to item nine, which is the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dot.
Good.
Thank you, Mike. Should we move in seconded? Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Excuse me, President Howard. We do have one hand raised. I'm not sure if they're wanting to talk on the consent agenda. If you do not, can you lower your hand? It looks like we have one hand.
Okay, let's bring him in.
So it looks like it's Professor, is it Warbase? I'm so sorry if I'm saying that wrong.
There. Welcome, Professor Warbase.
It might do this.
Professor Warbase, are you there? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, Amy, if she wants, she's disappeared. So I assume that means that was a mistake of having her hand raised.
I lowered the hand raise at the moment.
Okay, so.
Amy, could I ask Amy to, Amy, can you check to see if Ms. Adams' video is enabled, disabled? Because we tried to turn, click on it, and it didn't work. It said the host.
Oh, here we go. Start my video.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back in the game. Okay, then we'll move on. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll go to the vote here. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Cusack?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Theodore?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so it's five to nothing. The consent agenda is approved. Move on to item 10, 10A, the roadmap to reopening from the superintendent.
Yes, unmuting myself? All right. Thank you so much. Next slide. So tonight, I'm going to cover current health conditions update on Senate Bill 86, which is really the governor's plan that was approved by legislature. Alameda County updates, CVUSD reopening phases and dates. I think your mic is on, so I can hear and echo. Vaccination updates, student COVID testing, and then next school year, just a little bit about that. Next slide. Thank you. Here's where we are. We look really good. We are in red, and we're very happy to be in red, moving in the right direction. Next slide. So just a few pieces of information about Senate Bill 86. There are two pieces I wanted to just share with you tonight. One is the in-person instruction grant. This is governor's push to reopen schools in the spring. So basically, it is to provide in-person instruction, and that is defined by edcode as instruction under the immediate physical supervision and control of a certified employee. So that's the goal. And per Education Code, starting on March 22nd, we've been reporting our, how we are actually, whether we are in person or not so far. But now they're going to ask us on March 22nd, starting March 22nd, and every other second and fourth Monday. And this is something that we will have to do. We have to send to the state the information for our district as a whole and then each site specific on the following things, on the number of pupils enrolled by school site and if applicable by school district, if there is one school, and there are school districts that are one school. The number of students participating in full-time in-person instruction by school site, the number of pupils participating in a mix of in-person and distance learning, known as hybrid, which is what we're doing, and then the number of pupils participating in distance learning. So all of those, that, all of that data will be collected by the state to see how things are going around the state. And then there is another piece of SB 98 is the Learning Recovery Program. And that is to provide supplemental instruction, support for social emotional well-being, food, nutrition, all sorts of things beyond this school year. So that's really our work moving forward. And that is a different part of SB 98. So, and that plan needs to be prepared and approved by the board at a board meeting by June 1st. So we'll bring that back to you. There is a template that the state is putting together, and it's not ready yet. So it'll take a couple of weeks to get that. Next slide. Stop me wherever you have questions. And Alameda County update. So today, it's really nice that we have our board meeting always right after our meeting with the Alameda County Office of Education with Superintendent and Dr. Moss. So some of the things we covered today, we really talked about a lot of just review, but also just a few things. We're making good progress as a county in vaccination, and that's great news. So the percentage of adjusted case rates and vaccinations administered in certain zip codes are used to determine the tier designation for a county. So the, I think what I'm hearing is vaccination is going pretty well. We always want to increase it, and that's really the goal. The other thing that we talked about is really this whole idea of practicing vigilance and continuing all required precautions, masking, distancing, no large gatherings, and things like that. And then Alameda County Public Health Department recommends against non-essential travel. And if traveling more than like 120 miles and spending time with people outside of your cohort, or if you didn't follow required guidelines of masking and et cetera, it's important that you self, that people self-impose a quarantine, which is recommended. And next slide, again, we talked a lot about the fact that that's recommended, not required, because there is really no way for us to like knock on every door, obviously. So we all have to depend on each other. Reminders as we reopen our school for in-person instruction based on that information and what we talked about today is please make sure that we always wear masks, not just in school, but outside as well, socially distanced wherever we are, filling out screeners each day, which parents are going to get a reminder from Parent Square, following all school site guidelines for pickup and drop-off and all of those things that we've been training people on, and communicating with the school staff with relevant information regarding COVID. So if any questions or anything comes up, just kind of communicate. And then limiting travel deemed not essential, and then following guidelines related to quarantining if exposed. Next. So this, it's very small as I look at it on my little screen. But basically, this is actually on the Alameda County website, and it shows all the school districts, whether they've had hubs or not, and whether they are reopening and what dates. As you see, only several school districts are in the same place that we are. There are school districts that are not yet ready to reopen, but you will see here that we have our date of reopening, Pleasanton, Dublin, Berkeley, and Piedmont. So it's just a reference for folks. You can actually go online and actually you can click on this on your own and see it better on our presentation. So just kind of information as what's happening in the county. It's very interesting because when I, last Friday, we had our Northern California Superintendent's meeting. There are many, many school districts in many counties, many more that are open than where we are. Some that have been open for a long time. Just very different from county to county. Next slide. And this is our phased reopening plan. As you've seen it, it's been in my letter. It's been posted everywhere. So Phase 1, next Wednesday, is our first group. And then there will be more information coming up, coming to you about secondary. Yes.
I haven't been able to attend our school board information meeting with Dr. Moss. A few meetings ago, I asked about school spread of COVID. Did he mention anything about that in your last meeting? Like, has there been any documented spread with, in the schools that are open, in the hubs that are open in the county?
No, we didn't cover that. I just know that in our school district, we've been very successful. But that's a good question.
Yeah.
That's a great question. No.
Okay, thank you.
There is just a lot of, I think a part of our conversation is always about, you know, if something is recommended, right? If something is required, there's just a difference. And the difference is sometimes between the state and the county and the fact that they're really working hard to align them so that if you go to their website, you see the same information issue. So, next slide. I think there's an echo what I can think of. So our vaccination update is wonderful. So vaccination appointments have been made available at various locations, including, there has been Oakland Coliseum, Fairgrounds, some healthcare providers. And last week, also available at a mobile site at La Familia in Hayward, which we are grateful for. I can say every employee in Castro Valley Unified School District has had the opportunity to sign up for a vaccine because it got to a point where we actually had, not only did we have, you know, could they go on my turn and make appointments, but the County Office of Education, through the County Health Department, gave us codes for teachers. So we had many, and we gave them out. And like today, I heard from one person, and we immediately gave them codes. So it's available, and it's wonderful. This, when I say 78.95%, right? That is self-reporting. That, it's probably higher than that, my hunch is, because we just kind of did a survey, who's gotten vaccinated. And, but this is wonderful. All of these people, 78.9, 79% of our staff have reported that they either, they have an appointment or they've had their first or second dose, which is exciting. So. Next slide. And then student COVID testing started. Testing site is open this week, Monday through Friday, from twelve to six P M. At the CFA, on Redwood Road. COVID nineteen student testing is voluntary. For all, it's available to all grades. And then there is a lot of information, obviously, about all of this and on student COVID testing as well on our website. Next slide. So next school year. I mean, I, I know that as we come back, we're all thinking about the next school year. So what I wanted to share is the guidelines on the next school year are being discussed at this point at the state. And they're, they're going to be, oops, I repeated that twice, and will be released when it's ready. So as soon as we have those, then we can kind of start really looking at exactly what does that mean for us. Vaccination of the general public, not just educators, but the general public, as well as health conditions in each of our counties, and in California, will impact county and state guidelines for next fall. So that's what's really important. We have to kind of hope that there is more vaccination and all of that. But the goal is basically at the state is to return to pre-pandemic schedule as soon as possible. Again, being safe. Our district's goal is to reopen in the fall with the maximum in-person instruction possible, following all county and state guidelines and requirements. So we will be, we will continue to be very vigilant on top of things, make sure that we get all the information we need, and we'll continue to plan, which means really this summer, we are going to continue to work. Just like last year, everyone's going to be really busy trying to prepare for next year, but that's our goal. And I think that's my presentation. And I'm ready for any questions you have.
Sorry, I'm guilty now also, as always. Thanks. It was a great presentation. I'll repeat what I didn't say to everybody, unfortunately. That was a nice presentation. We appreciate all the hard work. We do have six people who have asked to speak, and we should start with those six, if that's okay. Amy, the first one is Maisie Fitzgerald. There you are. Maisie, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to speak. I'm a parent of a fourth and sixth grader, as well as having been and am a volunteer throughout many years in my children's school. As our county drops to lower and lower numbers, I want to express my support for reopening fully this fall. The current hybrid model helps get kids into classrooms, classrooms this spring, but it's not sustainable long-term. Many of our youth need full-time instruction to be successful academically and to be healthy socially and emotionally, components of which being in person provides. The mental toll this last year has taken on our youth has been immense. Anger, depression, loneliness, stress, and anxiety has risen. We have asked a lot of our children over the last year. They have had their world turned upside down with no notice. Every time things opened up or closed down, they were asked to adjust accordingly. Our children have, alright, so that, have had a lot asked of them. To return to full-time instruction would return some of their much-needed normalcy. For families with children in multiple schools and in different cohorts, there's a potential financial hardship as they may not be able to return to work, even if businesses are reopening. As more time will be spent shuttling their kids back and forth, this further creates equity issues for those families that don't have extra help or resources. My children and many others need the stability of a classroom to reach their greatest potential. Distance learning and hybrid are understandable short-term solutions, but are not adequate for the long-term educational achievements of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Maisie. Our second speaker is Melissa Allen. Or I guess it's David Muller, sorry. I'm seeing them in a different order.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that we're looking at a wider reopening. As we plan for next school year, I would really like us to not let our baseline shift to the anomalous last twelve months. We, we should not take hybrid learning or virtual as a starting point. Sounds like that's what we're going to do. There are large fractions of our students that are falling behind academically, socially, and emotionally. So I'd like us to think back to twenty nineteen, the last year that our decisions were primarily driven by CV USD's commitment to education and equity. We're obviously not going to be entirely back to twenty nineteen pre-COVID days. But in our planning, I'd like every concession that we make to COVID that diminishes the educational mission of our schools to be justified by a commensurate benefit in our battle with it. Because we are battling COVID. That's what the last year has been about, contending with a serious, highly contagious pathogen. There are many times in our history where we've confronted formidable adversaries. In fear and alarm, we sometimes resort to tactics that are ineffective, yet inflict considerable collateral damage. Japanese internment, communist blacklist, a Muslim ban. These might seem overdramatic, but we're inflicting long-term consequences on the futures of our children because we fear that they could be virus vectors. Kids are resilient is something I've heard many times, and it rings hollow in the face of compelling academic literature on summer learning loss and how it accumulates over time. I don't expect virtual learning loss to be any different. So when so many of their peers in private school and in other districts and other states are back and will be back in school full-time, it's not fair to ask our students to go by with less. So we are getting to know our common enemy COVID a lot better. We're fighting it much more effectively. We'll need to, we will need to make concessions to COVID, but let's make smart ones. So let's keep in mind the collateral impact that these concessions are going to have. Masking seems like a no-brainer since it's highly effective in reducing the spread with a minimal disruption to class. But six-foot distancing is, is effectively cutting the students' time in half with teachers and peers. Yet many schools in the U S have successfully suppressed in-school spread with three-foot distancing. My daughter just asked today why she can't have recess or P E when she goes back to school, because it's outdoors and they can wear masks. And I thought it was an excellent question. We are winning the war on COVID. Every adult should have the opportunity to be vaccinated by the beginning of next school year. So let's put the focus back on CV USD's mission and not concede anything to COVID that we don't need to. Let's treat our children's education as the singularly valuable asset we believe it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker, I think, is Melissa Allen. Welcome to our meeting, Melissa.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. When our schools closed a year ago, I applauded the swift action in the face of an unprecedented virus outbreak. The doors closed on Friday, and the next week, teachers had developed a plan for our kids to learn what they could for their remainder of the school year. The end of the school year arrived. My older son attended his virtual fifth grade graduation and prepared to attend middle school. For my younger son, we were heading I E P, serve his needs virtually as best it could. And I prepared to provide him with the sports he would need to learn online, and we waited. When school started in August, we were told we needed to wait longer, and the schools would only be virtual. I was disappointed but understood. We should be comfortable learning virtually because we need to be flexible about switching between virtual and in-person learning. We did what we were told, and we picked up our supplies and logged on to our virtual learning platforms, and we waited. This week marks a year since my kids have been face-to-face with their teachers and classmates. A year since they've interacted with other kids in the playground. The basketball court, or participated in live with classroom discussions, the kind that cannot be duplicated on Zoom. We could have an entire meeting discussing why our kids have not been in the classroom full-time. But I'm not interested in that discussion. I would rather discuss how we as a district need to come together, develop a plan to exit hybrid, and return our kids to the classroom full-time. It is not possible to foresee all the pitfalls a full-time return would entail. But we need to develop a comprehensive plan based on what we do know, work together as a community, and include all stakeholders in the planning process. Students, teachers, parents, and administrators. And most importantly, allow the Alameda County Health Department to set the health and safety guidelines. We cannot wait any longer. Other local districts have already made a commitment to learning with, with Berkeley Schools leading the way, opening a store as five days a week to TK through second-grade students starting March twenty-ninth, and extending five days a week to third through fifth grade starting April twelfth. Additionally, San Ramon has also signaled a commitment to opening its doors full-time this fall. It is time we follow suit. The community around us is reopening. Our schools should not remain partially open. Schools should lead the way, setting the example and educating communities around them on how to operate safely. Our schools should be the last to close and the first to open. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Our next speaker is Roosevelt. Roosevelt Chang.
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome, welcome to our meeting, Roosevelt.
Thanks, Gary. I asked the board to have an approved plan to return to full in-person instruction in August. Data on COVID nineteen is frightening, but data also show that we are making trade-offs that have devastating consequences. We know schools can operate safely. Let's stop asking this question. North Carolina, thirty-two cases of in-school spread out of ninety thousand students and staff. Sweden, Norway, they've all published similar results. Three large studies, three different locations, legitimate science. We have had pods, even in purple tier, zero cases of in-school transmission, credible data. Our classified staff and families have shown that we can be on school campus safely. Thank you. We know that learning loss with virtual is real, and that learning is not as effective. In our district, Ds and Fs have doubled, while As have also increased. Our district has announced a larger summer school program than ever. We have a learning chasm, not a gap. Edsource reported a drop of thirteen thousand homeless students in California. We have not suddenly found homes for them. California public schools have lost track of thirteen thousand children. California Social Services reported forty-six thousand fewer calls of suspected child abuse in five months alone. With virtual learning, it is virtually impossible for educators to see and report abuse as required by law. Child abuse has not disappeared. Tens of thousands continue to be abused and unprotected. Edsource surveyed a hundred and twenty-one veteran California teachers. One-third agreed to a great or very great extent, quote, "A substantial number of their students are in danger of suffering long-term mental health issues." Almost two-thirds agree, quote, "A substantial number of my students are in danger of suffering long-term academic damage." I am highly disturbed when I hear resilience of children myth continue to be peddled as a rationale for not opening fully. Children should not need to be resilient to adults making decisions not grounded in science or in data. Children should not need to be resilient to learning loss forced upon them. Children without homes should not need to be resilient to becoming invisible to our public education. Children should not need to be resilient to abuse. Adults should never use resilience of children as their excuse for decisions made out of fear that accrue significant damaging and life-threatening cost to children. The board should keep the virtual option, in fact, make it better. Virtual families deserve that, but we need to have a full in-person option. Hybrid becomes virtual. Hybrid has offered two virtual options to families. Families who have wanted in-person have had no choice. You, the trustees, are expected to make policies given trade-offs. Recognize that you have been making trade-offs for over a year. These are very real children bearing very real costs. August will come all too soon. My question for you, who will you continue to ask to bear these very real costs? To everyone, wear your mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Roosevelt. Our next speaker is Zachariah.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Yes, hello. This is Neta.
Okay, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I echo some of what the parents before me have said, and I wanted to say that I feel that the vaccinations are really a big game changer. I'm really thrilled that our teachers and staff are vaccinated and excited that we can reopen. And I think that the district has really done an amazing job, and I'm excited about the changes in the coming weeks. And I, a couple of other notes, too, that I'm also looking forward to a full-time reopening in the fall. And I do see a few other districts in other counties able to open fully right now. So I hope that our Alameda County Public Health Department will help us find a way to do so in our county as well. And I wish that online summer school was offered for kids who won't qualify for in-person due to space limitations. And I want to mention that I was really impressed with the CVE presentation today. It gives me so much pride to see that anti-racism thriving in our district. So thank you to everybody for all of your hard work. Thank you to all of the board members and all of our district leaders, management, staff, and teachers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker, I believe, is Ann, although I've gotten that wrong a few times, but I believe this is Ann. Ann, welcome to our meeting.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'll try to be brief. Again, I want to echo the support for a full commitment to resumption of pre-pandemic conditions at the school. And again, I will, if and when we find out that cohorts are short students, if it's possible during the end of this year to consider expanding so that as many students as want to be in person can have the maximum time on campus. It matters every day that these kids get to be with a teacher, with their peers, really, really helps. I know we've got plans. I know they were hard to get. But when you find, like, other districts are finding that the kids coming back, especially in the afternoon P M cohorts, are short, if there's ways to reconfigure so that the kids who want to get back can get back with other kids, please do so. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ann. So I'm sure that our, I suspect that our superintendent would like to say a few things, but I would like to point out one thing here, and that is, I think all of us on the board, I suspect, share a lot of the concerns that the parents have. But the reason we're going back to a hybrid model is because that's what the county will allow us to do. Right now, we are not allowed to open fully, even if we wanted to. Is that, I think that's my understanding. Is that correct, Superintendent?
So it, it actually is because of the requirements of the six-foot distancing. So we don't have the capacity. And I, I do hear, you know, some of the comments about people who have fully, none of the schools in Alameda County are actually able to fully open, because none of us in, in our schools have enough room to have everybody in with six-foot distancing, because you need more space. But that is our goal. And I, I have to say, I'm always so impressed by folks who, there's, by folks who speak at our board meetings, because it just, I, I really am impressed with the thought-provoking comments and things like that. I think somebody's not muted. Can't think. We're learning. And then the other thing I wanted to say, so what I'm hearing at the state, the goal is really to have kids back in full-time, full-day. That's the goal. What has to be changed at the state is the distancing. So as Trustee Howard said, we're not allowed to, because we still have to stick with that six-foot distancing. If that changes at the state, which I'm hearing is a part of the conversation, then that gives us more room to have more kids in, to have full day. The other piece that's really important, SB ninety, SB eighty-nine actually requires that until the pandemic is technically and officially as a country and globally is over, in California, we're required to offer distance learning, just like our virtual academy, to those who don't want to come. But that's the default, not the main option, should be students back in full-time, full-in-person. That's the goal. So I just, I just want to repeat that, because I want you to know we're on the same page. And as Trustee Howard said, right now, it's, it's not possible for us to have everybody back because of the distancing issue. But we're getting better, and they are looking at the, the physical distancing. And that's our goal. So if the board has any other questions that I can respond to? And so if the board has any other questions that I can respond.
I probably have some comments, but let me just ask this question first. I believe what, I saw some data out there, I think like our district is kind of an outlier in the percentage of students who have opted for the hybrid or sort of in-person option. Do you have any stat? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, I know, I actually do, thank you for asking that, I think that's a great question. We actually have seventy percent of our students wanting to come back in person, which is great. But that also means that if you, if a district has only thirty percent of their students coming back, that they can basically have whoever wants to come back, come back in. So that's a great question, thank you for asking that. Which is wonderful, again, good news, but the space.
I just want to recognize the tension that we face, right? You go back, it's almost been one year since, was it a Friday night that this, this board had to close down our schools? And it started out, I think we were thinking two weeks, then it became a month. And there's so much more, we do, we know that. I just wonder how, how can we frame and build confidence that if conditions are correct, we can get to that full-time model in the fall? But also being thoughtful that we have to, 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 to plan for those contingencies. It's a real struggle, and I'm just going to put it out there as a parent of two kids who's gone through all the implications of, of, of the impact of this, and I know all of our communities face that as well, so. I'm just wondering how we, it seems like the biggest factors, it really does come down to density and that distancing. And it comes down to us trusting the public health authorities that are providing that guidance to us, so. That's my comment.
Thanks, Michael. Are there any other comments or questions for the superintendent? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item B, the personnel report, which was amended.
I'll move to approve the amended personnel report.
Thank you, Dot, sir, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lavender, it's moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll, excuse, we have to do this one at a time, don't we? Lavender.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Dot.
Yes.
And I'll say yes, and that will make it five to nothing, and the personnel report is approved, thank you, Dr. Beetz. We'll move on to item C.
So, item C is, we're bringing, for your, for your consideration and approval of certificated substitute salary increase. We would like to make sure to be competitive with other districts. Fortunately, in just our nearing, districts near us are not opening yet. However, when they do open, we're all looking at the same substitutes and we know that we depend on our wonderful substitutes and are bringing this to you for your consideration for the rest of the year.
This is an action item.
I'll move to approve the, the new substitute rate.
Thank you, Dot.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dolly, it's removed and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote, Lavender. Oh, pardon me. Is this, is this a personnel, considered a personnel issue?
No, this is actually a budget issue, it's not, you're not approving personnel.
Okay, so in that case, we'll go to Shane first for his preferential vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Shane. Okay, Lavender.
Yes.
Mike, Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so that's, means that the certificated salary increase is approved, five to zero. Move on to item D, the financial condition, second interim report, welcome, Suzie.
Thank you, good evening, Board and Superintendent. Okay, so here we are in March, March ten, and we are, I'm going to present the second interim report to you with changes, comparing changes from first interim, so next slide. So this is just an overview that you've seen before, but you know, for the public, we wanted to just share this again to show what first interim covers and what second interim covers. Next slide. Overview of certification tonight, I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to share with you that we are, we are requesting a positive certification for your approval tonight. And so we have other, other certification that, that the county and also the state allows, in this case, the qualified and negative, but we are in the positive certification. And next slide. Just again, just, just a quick highlight of the annual badge, budget, budget cycle. We've, you've seen the first, you know, we, the budget adoption that was in June, and then we revised it, forty-five day revise. First interim, you've seen and approved in December, and here we are, second interim, so. You are going to see a lot of changes tonight, so next slide. So the purpose of the second interim report really is just, is looking at assumptions, and we, we do this regularly. So any changes in terms of information available from the state level, the federal level, and also locally, right? So taxes, our property, property taxes and, and enrollment, which in this case, enrollment, we, we've reported that it went slightly, we decreased slightly in the, in terms of enrollment this year. But as you know, the, the state is held as harmless in terms of ADA in the current year, so it's, so we get to use the ADA from prior year, which is for us, compared to this year, it's actually higher. And then also on duplicated count and other state funding change, and also federal allocations that we received, I'm going to go through that during the presentation, throughout the presentation. Next slide. So we're focusing on our general fund, and that's the biggest, you know, our budget is really looking at revenues and expenditures in the general fund where we have most of our expenses. So unrestricted general fund, you're used to seeing a combination of the restricted and unrestricted, like a summary. But in this case, I thought it'd be, it will be good to share with you or show you the unrestricted first, and then we will move on to the restricted, just so you can see the changes that happen throughout this, you know, from first interim to second interim, in terms of our, the funds that are unrestricted versus the ones that are restricted because of the additional money that we receive from, from the state and the federal government. So unrestricted general fund, this is revenue, again, comparing it from first interim to second interim. You're seeing a change there in the local control funding formula, about two-hundred-sixty-six thousand dollars, and this is because we certified the unduplicated pupil count in January. So I know, as you recall, in, as a first interim, there was a slight change, that's because at that time, we, our unduplicated count was lower than anticipated. The state allowed us though to extend the, the certification period. And so we were able to, to identify more students in this, that falls in this category, right? So included in the undupicated, unduplicated pupil count, sorry, can't speak, are our EL students, English learner students, economically disadvantaged students, foster youth, for the unduplicated, and the reason why they say unduplicated is because each student is only counted once, even though they, the student meets more than one criteria. So in this case, we were able to identify more students, and so that is actually more revenue for us, which is a good thing. So two-hundred-sixty-six thousand is the, the additional amount that we receive for, for the number of students that we have, and we're about twenty-nine percent unduplicated count.
So can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
With the unduplicated count, there's been a particular challenge because of COVID, correct?
Correct.
We are under the Meals Act, we're able to push out meals to any, anyone who wants it. So how we get, are we still trying to qualify families for free and reduced in this environment? Is that, that's what you're working on, correct?
Yes, yeah, so we do, we, we still would like to receive that information, or we, we do have like an application process, and that's throughout the year. We, our, our child nutrition department in, in partnership with Student Services is to really reach out to families because it's not just, just because we are held harmless in the current year and we've increased the unduplicated count, there are other funds or grants that we, that unduplicated count matters, right? So it's the, the number of free and reduced students that we have. If we have more eligibility, then we can apply for, for more grants or our Title I gets increased. And so that's, it's a, it's a full year, it's not just a cutoff period, but it's really a full-year process for us that we reach out to, to families who really can benefit to and getting this, this program. So we don't, we are, we, unrestricted, we don't receive unrestricted federal funds, they always come restricted. So that's a zero amount there, but state, the state funds. So that's a, a small increase there, twenty-six thousand dollars, that's because the lottery rate did increase about twenty-five cents, and so that it's based on enrollment, and so we did receive about twenty-six thousand dollars. Local revenue, this is an increase in the ROP revenue and also medical reimbursement. Next slide, so we're going to look at unrestricted expenditures. So again, looking at first interim to second interim, salaries and benefits. You're probably wondering, salaries and benefits, one-point-one million dollars in savings. And that is because there are a couple of things there. So I've noted there that savings from vacant positions hourly and substitutes, because we are in distance learning. When the, in, as of adopted budget, we assumed that we were going to spend the same amount as prior years, right? But because we were distance learning, we, we had some savings in, you know, substitutes because we didn't really need substitutes while in distance learning, as well as we had vacant positions that we, we, we were, that were unfilled for maybe a month or two, that just depends on the position, especially in the, on the classified position, as well as hourly, right? So we built in a budget, or we built in an additional hourly, a good example will be transportation, right? So our transportation department in previous years, depending on how many students we transport, there are times when they actually, our, our drivers are able to get additional routes because they either need to transport our athletics department, or they take in more routes for like ROP. So, so, so obviously those things did not happen this year, and so that hourly did not get used in the current year. So the second piece of that one-point-two, one-point-two million dollars is because we had CARES Act. So there were some positions that we were allowed to charge because of the type, the different work that they, that they did in the current year. So one good example is they're looking at a model, a instructional model in the current year. And so for some of our educational services department, some of those, they were working on a instruction model in the current year, so we were allowed to use, to, to transfer some of their salaries into the CARES Act. That means the money that, that we budgeted out of the unrestricted is now, it becomes savings, and so that's the reason why it's one-point-one million dollars. Again, the one-point-one million dollars you're going to see in the next few slides is actually dropping in the bottom line, so, so that's a good thing for us. Same thing with the books and supplies, a hundred-seventy thousand dollars, because we did have some, you know, savings in the Chromebooks, so Chromebooks is, as you know, included in the CARES Act. It's allowed for us to use CARES Act to, to pay for devices, student devices. And so what we had budgeted in the unrestricted to pay for Chromebooks, that about a hundred-seventy thousand dollars of that went into the CARES Act. A slight adjustment there in services and expense of fourteen thousand dollars. And then capital outlay, I do want to note this hundred thousand dollars was really for a couple of vans that we were hoping to purchase in the current year. As you know, we are always expanding, we're trying to expand our transportation department. And so a hundred thousand dollars was set aside in the current year. Unfortunately, by the time, or, but by the time we we finalized the second interim report, we actually found a good deal on a couple of vans. And so this is going to go back to, or we're going to budget this a hundred thousand dollars again. So I just wanted to, to, for you to know that, that it's, it, as a second interim, it's a reduction, but really, in the next couple of weeks, we're actually going to put it back, it's a hundred thousand dollars. So the other outgo there is, is a increase in the ROP, because this is a path through money that we get for ROP, right? So we, there's an increase in the revenue for ROP, then we, that increase then goes back to the ROP in terms as an other outgo, which is an expenditure, because we did get the, the revenue for it. Next slide. So this time, we're going to look at the restricted, restricted general fund. And here, this is the reason why I wanted to share with you the restricted versus unrestricted. Because in the, on the revenue side, we did have a, under LCFF, again, local control funding formula, a slight increase in the property taxes there, about seventy-two thousand dollars in federal. I wanted to show the increase in federal of one-point-one million dollars, and this is the second round of CARES Act, which is the Esser, other Esser funds. One-point-one million dollars, if you recall last board meeting, the, the last meeting, Dr. Ryman and, and his team presented the, the summer school expansion. And so what we've noted there is that the money that we get from the second round of CARES Act, which is the Esser funds, we will use all of that money towards that, that expansion, and that's the one-point-one million dollars. And this state here is two-hundred-fifty-eight thousand dollars, just again, similar lottery increase, and also we have a grant, a strong workforce grant, and that is to pay for the, a couple of positions, we have the, the career counselor that's paid, will be paid out of that grant, as well as a classified support for the coordination and reporting of the CTE engineering program. And then the local donation there for a hundred-four thousand dollars is what we received in the current year, or to date. And then on the next slide, looking at restricted expenditures. So the salaries and benefits there that you're seeing is one-point-one, oh, it's actually one-point-two million dollars. This is the second round of CARES Act for, for the summer school that I mentioned. And then books and supplies from books and supplies all the way to other outgo. You're seeing those changes there. These are planned expenditures that are deferred in next year. And so these are the ones that are good, that will be carried over because they're restricted funds. These are funds that, for specific purpose. They are, we, we always receive multi-year grants, and so we don't necessarily need to, to use them in the current year. We can actually extend the use of these grants, and that really helps us, and that's the reason why what we've done is really look at all the different resources, all these grants, to see, do we really need, are we going to spend them by June? If not, then let's reduce them, knowing. If not, then let's reduce them knowing that they will be held in a restricted, um, uh, balance, uh, for next year. This helps us with the ending fund balance and this, uh, part of the work that we've done is with, uh, uh, the credit rating companies is this type of work is to show them that we fully budget the grants, but knowing that we actually don't spend all of them, um, uh, in the current year. We do have carryover, uh, every year we always have carryover in restricted funds. Uh, okay. And then if no questions on this slide, I'll move on to the next slide. So components of 2020, 21 ending, uh, fund balance. So our ending fund balance combined restricted and unrestricted is, they're all close to 13.4 million dollars. And then we have the set of sites here revolving cash stores and then the legally restricted is up to, uh, 3.2 million dollars. We have, uh, a small, um, amount assigned for textbook adoption and also our, uh, Center for the Arts, uh, carry, uh, or, uh, balance, um, there. So, so what's remaining is the reserve for economic uncertainties and that's 9.9%. Uh, which really is about 8.83% of, um, our, um, expenditures, right? So, so that is the level of the, um, uh, reserve, uh, reserve level that we have as of second interim. You'll notice if you compare it to first interim, this, it's an increase of $1.4 million. And that's because of what I, um, mentioned in the few slides, because of, uh, due to one-time savings in hourly substitute and, and filled positions, supplies and materials. So that's again, compared to first interim, it's an increase, uh, uh, by, uh, $1.4 million. So it's 9.9%, uh, 9.9 million or 8.83%.
Suzie, Mike has a question.
Yeah.
Suzie, could you just put that in perspective? That represents, is that like a month of payroll or?
Yeah. So it's actually one point, a good question. So a payroll, if we're just looking at payroll, this is, this is, uh, two months worth of payroll, but a monthly expense, including our, uh, um, materials and supplies, it's about 1.2. But yeah, and, um, one, uh, 1.2 months. Okay. And then next slide. So this slide, um, again, we, we wanted to just share with you our cash flow. So cash flow and the reason why it's so important is because the governor, um, included in the, uh, has enacted budget, uh, deferrals, right? Deferrals in the, um, that impacts all, uh, school districts. So including Castro Valley. So we've had a presentation about deferrals, uh, back in October. We've shared with you all the different options that we can, um, we can, um, explore. Um, and of course, at that time, we thought, um, that this is going to be ongoing. In this case, uh, the state gets, uh, receives more money. And so, uh, his, uh, January proposal actually eliminates most of the deferrals. And so the, they, um, most of them are now one time, except for one, which is June apportionment in the current year. It will continue until next year. So looking at our cash flow, we are in such a good shape, um, except for May, right? So that's when the problem is going to start hitting us. You, this is $2 million, which is very different from last time we looked at this. Lot, first interim is 6.5 million that we needed to borrow. But in this case, because, uh, we have, um, uh, we've received, uh, more than we anticipated. Um, and so we're looking at a, 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 a transfer or a, a inner fund borrowing from other funds of about $2 million at this ti- point in time. We are hearing that additional money will be coming in. That means it will help, uh, it will help us for the rest of the year. So we may not need a $2 million. So we're still trying to, to get more information as to when the new money will come, come in. Uh, if it's going to help us, if not, then we will need a resolution, we will take a resolution to you for approval, um, uh, which is about the $2 million. So where, when we say in, in our fund borrowing or we borrow from ourselves, it just means that it's for cash, it's so cash flow, uh, purposes has been allowed by statute, right? So, so we're allowed to borrow for, within our funds. So, um, the state, because of the state deferred, uh, implemented deferrals, um, uh, many districts, including us, we're looking at borrow, you know, trying to borrow if we can, uh, using other funds or, um, other districts. Uh, I know that they've actually participated in the, uh, state, uh, tran- state, uh, tran, which is the, um, tax and revenue anticipation, anticipation notes. Uh, we don't need to go that route because again, we have some money that we have in other funds. And I'll go through, uh, what those other funds are in the next few slides. But in this case, uh, it's about $2 million and we should be good for the rest of the, for the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, and then next year, uh, we shouldn't have, uh, the issue that we, that we're going to have this year. Mike?
So effectively what you're saying is we can take a 0% interest loan against ourselves rather than participate in outside
Yes.
funding mechanism, which would entail cost.
Correct. That's, that's a great, yes. That's a, uh, that's correct. I do want to note that if we borrow from other funds, right? So we do need to pay it, uh, the principal and interest that, that, that fund would have earned had it stayed in that account. So yes, so that's the only, right? So whether it's a general fund or other funds, it was, we would still, uh, get that interest or earn that interest. Okay, next slide. So multi-year projections. This is looking at prior year, but also in the current year and to out years, which is, uh, what the county and the state, uh, requires us to, to, to provide. So in looking at 2020, 2020, 21 school year or, or fiscal year, again, it just shows you all the way at the bottom. If you look at all the way at the bottom, it says $9.9 million is our, uh, is, is what we have. And, um, it is that 8.96% level. In 2122, if you compare it to first interim, it's, uh, it's, it increased. And that's because of that 3.84% COLA, cost of living adjustment that the government, the governor proposed in January. When we, uh, reported to you the changes, um, that, uh, based on that governor's proposed budget, this is one of them. This is the 2122 LCFF did go up by about 3.9, 3.9 million dollars ongoing. That's because of that COLA. So we really, uh, would prefer to have a cost of living adjustment because we know it's ongoing. When you, when you get one-time funds, it's just one time, right? You don't get it all year. So, so that's why if you look at all the way at the bottom of that 2122 fiscal year, we are projecting we will get to, um, 11.9 million dollars in reserve, which is about 11.53%. And then 2220, uh, 2223, um, will be at, uh, almost, uh, $12 million, which is 11.46%. Okay. Um, next slide, which this is really just assumptions that I view, that, you know, we've used. The, um, updated, you know, we've always update our, um, ADA projections due to, um, enrollment decrease. Uh, and then, uh, as you know, we're, I've mentioned, will, we are held harmless in the current year, but, uh, we will experience a decrease in revenue starting in 2223, which is what you saw from 85 to 84. It's a 3.84% cost of living, living adjustment. But in 2223, I do want to highlight that this is a zero COLA because the, um, we are, we assume the 3.84% COLA in next year, 2122, because we know that the state did get the funds. So it's going to be funded, right? In 2223, even though there is a, um, uh, a, uh, an estimate there that they provided, uh, for us, it's not real money yet. And so we did not want to, uh, assume that risk because of what's going on. So we want to make sure that, uh, we, uh, only account for the 3.84% in next year, but not the out years. So I just wanted to.
Mike has a question, Suzie.
Sorry to go back to ADA. Um, I know we're held harmless for 2021. Um, do we know about 2122? Has that been, okay, so
Not yet.
Something that, that, that has an impact here.
Correct. Yes. So that, so yes, so if, uh, right now, we, uh, we know that we are only held harmless in the current year. And so that will carry us through next year, right? 2223, but not the year after. And that's what the, uh, what we, uh, that's why we started seeing that change from 2122 to 2223. If the state gives us another year,
Yeah.
then that one, that one million change, the 1.2 million dollar change, you won't see until 2324. It kind of pushes out, out another year.
Have we heard legislatively or from the governor that there might be some discussion around that?
No. Not yet. Not yet. Not yet. Again, I, I think it's really important, uh, what Ms. Chan just said, that it doesn't go away, it just keeps moving forward. So we've, the damage has been done. It's just, it just goes forward. Yeah. Um, so, um, in our projections, we always remove the one-time funds. So you're seeing a change. So you, we, um, record all of the one-time funds in the current year, which is the CARES Act, ESER and all of that. But next year, um, the reason why you're seeing a change in the revenue in the federal and state, state, um, uh, funds is because we had to remove the one-time fund. So you, so that's the difference there. Expenditures, we, um, uh, assume the, um, step and column increase for all three years. We already have the costers and capers, uh, rates for the, for the next three years. So the, those are also included as well as any contributions, additional contributions that we make to other programs, um, and all, and then of course, and expenditures. Again, we removed the one-time revenue. We also removed the one-time expenditures, uh, for the out years or in the out years. Next slide. So, um, earlier I mentioned about the cash flow. And so we were looking at a couple of different funds, but I wanted to show you the ending fund balances that we have in each fund. So I'm going to highlight a couple of the funds that we, we've noted before in terms of a cash flow. Uh, one of them is Fund 35. Fund 35 is the, um, uh, School County Facilities Fund. So that's the, uh, fund, uh, we use to, um, this fund, we use primarily, uh, to account for facility construction or modernization. So it's capital, capital facilities fund. And then the other fund that we were think, uh, that we wanted to look at, if we needed more at this, in this case, right? We don't need, it's, we only need $2 million. So we should, we can just look at Fund 35. But, uh, because we've said it before, uh, it's the, it's Fund 40, which is the Special Reserve Fund for Capital Outlay Projects. And so again, you know, can be, can only be used for capital outlay projects. This is where we have our lease rentals and leases revenue. And so if, if anything, if there's anything, any work that needs to be done to, to, to upgrade our facilities, this is also another fund that we can use. Okay. And then next slide. In terms of next steps, uh, we are, um, we've started, uh, our 2122, uh, zero-based budgeting. So, uh, to, and we will present to you, uh, the CBB, the first, uh, the first draft, uh, the first meeting in April, and then the second meeting will be, uh, a final approval. And then in May, we, uh, we will present the May revise, uh, from the governor and any changes to revenue in the, in, in 2122 as well as the out years. And then of course, uh, we, uh, we'll bring the budget and the LCAP for public hearing at the first meeting in June and the second meeting will be the adopt, uh, adoptions per bill, budget and LCAP. Any questions? I think that's my final, yeah. Final slide.
Michael.
I just want to make a compliment. Thank you. Um, this has been a brand new world for me to understand school budgets and, um, I, I'm so confident in the care that you, you give to this. I'm absolutely impressed, Suzie, and I would just want to thank you, um, to know that we had the financial resources to really make sure that we get to the other end of this, uh, pandemic and that we're able to do things like that interfund transfer. Like, thank you for all you're doing to fight, to make sure that we have a, a, a solid budget.
Thank you.
Ravine?
Yeah, I just, um, thank you for saying that. I think one of the reasons we have been successful is the fact that the way Suzie works and we really always look at all of this in the way we should be looking at it, like being very conservative about our enrollment because there are districts that, for example, their, uh, enrollment projection gives them a number that doesn't come through and that's the worst thing you could do. So that, I also want to take this time to say, um, or, or the fact the other piece is, uh, actually assuming, even though they've said, well, it's three point whatever for next year, but thereafter it might be, we don't go with might, we go with what is. So, but what I want to use this opportunity to ask the community and all of us, as we think about advocacy at this state for funding, there are three things we really need to think about. We should always push for ongoing funds versus one time. We should always keep pushing on anything that the state can do to, uh, help us with stirs and purrs outside of Prop 98 and really protecting Prop 98. The other piece is always to advocate for COLA. Uh, because there have been years where we've had zero or even negative. So just a, a couple of areas, when people ask like, what can I say to my legislators? I'd say, talk about those things. So that's it. Thank you.
Any other question or comment? Well, Suzie, thanks again for a great, uh, report. You always do a terrific job on these and, uh, we appreciate all your hard work on it. You've been really imaginative at solving a number of the financial problems in this district. And as Mike said, it gives us a great deal of confidence that we're in good condition. And I'm always amazed at how good a condition we are in compared to many of the districts around us who are sadly not doing that well. So thanks again, Suzie.
But this is an action, this is an action.
Oh, it's an action item.
Gary, may I make a motion that we certify our financial condition second interim report for 2020, 2021?
Thank you, Mike. Second lavender. Thank you very much. Been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Take a vote here. Shane, your vote?
Yes.
You? Mike?
Yes.
Lavender? Nolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, that's five to zero. The second interim report is approved. So I don't see any requests for public comment. We have nothing going on, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, I don't really have anything else to say. I accept, I was really, um, grateful to be invited to, uh, one of our clubs, uh, the International Girls Club and that I got to speak to yesterday. It was so awesome to see all the students on there. So thank you for inviting us. That's it.
Thank you, Lavender.
Um, I think Shane goes next, right? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah. Shane, would you like to say anything else?
Yeah, sure. I just have two things. Um, I've been working with school members in Alameda County to have a bigger presence in CSBMA and I've been working with high school ASB and staff to prepare for reopening.
Great. Thank you, Shane. Now Lavender?
Thank you. Um, so I, um, was with a couple other board members and Superintendent Amati at the Canyon Creekside Shared Black History Month Celebration. That was a really fun celebration and they had a few activities together and it was like a had a few activities together and it was like a, a great fun way to learn about each other and about the material. So that was really exciting and fun. I work with Parveen and Gary on the CV USC Hard Ad Hoc Committee. We had one previously. We're going to have one again. It's a great place for our shared goals of collaboration for our community. And I'll be visiting Canyon and Creekside on Friday. And then I just want to say, you know, I noticed Jason has a picture, Dr. Reiman has a picture on his page. I just, you know, I, I know Dot always has a picture and I just want to thank you both for continuing to show pictures that push forward equity in our community. And Jason, thank you for promoting Women's History Month with your picture. Can you, can you share with the community who is in your picture?
That is our great leader, Dolores Werthe, who is an amazing leader of the United Farm Workers and, and inspiration for anybody who is a champion of justice.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Mike?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the middle school Black History Month celebration. It was a great bookend to the other side of Black History Month. We started out the month with the high school celebration. I was honored to visit the African-American Alliance Network with our two middle schools, Creekside and Canyon. I just want to thank everyone who welcomed me into that space. And I, I am here to support and I'm grateful that I was given the privilege to be there. I'm also participating with the Equity Task Force. We talked about that previously. I am reading along with some of our teachers and administrators, a book about equitable grading practices. And it's, it's really fun to be invited into that space as well. This is where you're sort of talking about educational policy in a very nuts and bolts type of way. And I'm just, it really impresses me how some of our administrators and teachers think about equity in this district. So I look forward to continuing with that group. I had the pleasure to visit three of our schools in the past two weeks. Spent some time at Castor Valley High School, Canyon and Jensen Ranch. And I want to thank all the administrators there, the principals for allowing me to spend some time there. As a left-handed person who's left-handed, I really appreciate the new desks that are being installed in our schools because of measure G, that they're like arrow shaped. And they don't really care if you're left-handed or right-handed. So thank you. Those have been a long time coming. As a parent, we've, I know a lot of us have struggled to imagine what will school reopening look like. It was really helpful for me in real life to see a lot of the safety procedures set in classrooms, whether it's the distancing of our desks or putting the shields up and seeing the markers throughout the schools. So I am, want to thank everyone who's, who's preparing schools for a safe reopening. Your hard work is, is going to let us bring our kids back. So thank you so much. And thank you for all the schools that have invited me and I look forward to getting to the rest of our schools in the next few weeks.
Nolly?
Hi. Yes. So I went to CSBA Regional Meeting, which is California School Boards Associate, Association. The regional meeting met with a few people. I think Michael was there as well. And then today I just finished the first class in governance, also by CSBA. And I'll be doing the second class in a couple of weeks. I'm scheduled to visit Stanton Elementary. But it was going to be tomorrow, but we're going to have to kind of reschedule it until maybe next week for various reasons. And that's about it, I'd say, on what I've been doing so far.
Thank you, Nolly. Dot?
Last week was the Eden Area ROP meeting. They, so each meeting, they have a presentation of student of the month. So that was always, it's always very nice to hear the wonderful things the teachers have to say about their student of the month. And they also regularly do a deep dive into their programs. So last week, the programs that they did a deep dive into was their food and nutrition program and their adult, adult education program. So it was really interesting. Their food and nutrition, the person who's in charge of that program is so into food and so into everything about food. So their program is from earth to earth, really. They talk about how food is grown and they grow food and then the whole cycle of picking food, processing food and, and preparing it. So it was really interesting to hear about that program. And then they talked about their adult education program and learned about their medical assisting program, their dental assisting program and their electrical program. So it's a wonderful organization and I'm, I'm so glad that our district is a part of that collaboration. I wasn't able to go to the Canyon Creekside African-American Association Celebration, but Dr. Tekla Merriman sent me the program that, on their Google Doc. And so I got to see some of it. You know, of course you miss out a lot when you don't get to see it live. But it seemed like a really great opportunity for students. And it was really just nice to hear student voices. I really missed that. And so I was glad to be able to see a part of what their program was. And that's it.
Okay. I just have a couple of things and they've all been mentioned thus far. And that's the Hard Ad Hoc Committee meeting that we attended with Lavender and Parveen. And also the Black Student Union Celebration at Canyon and Creekside. This is a great program. So does anybody else have any last minute things they want to bring up?
I just have two events I have to remind everybody of. One is our adult school has actually worked with the Mosaic project. And I know that Ms. Kayer has sent information out about that. It's a great program for parents to, to really talk, what kind of conversations can we have? It's again focused on equity and anti-racism. So I highly recommend that. It's going to be wonderful. The other thing I wanted to say is I am planning because it is, March is Women's History Month. So I'm almost ready to finalize a panel discussion with five women professionals, some in our community, some outside of our community, that will have hopefully the, the week of the 22nd of March. Possibly on the 23rd, but I'll send more information out as I have every confirmation. So we're excited about that.
Okay. Well, that concludes our meeting here tonight. So I will close the meeting and thank everyone for attending and participating. Thanks in particular to the 38 brave souls who are still, 37, who are now still with us at the bitter end of our meeting. So thanks and we will see you in a couple of weeks. Good night.